Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope that you had a wonderful day. It is indeed a great opportunity for us to share in the business of this day. We've come to share tonight the path of Martin Luther King Jr. Conspirator Committee. All of us members, my name is Melvin Barrett. I am the current president of the MLK Conspirator Committee. Tonight, we will follow a very rigid schedule. And we have a lot to talk about tonight, but I want to welcome you tonight to share with us some of your thoughts and concerns as we are hosting this school board call. We are excited that these individuals have grown the essence of the green, sacrificed their time, their family's time, to share with us in this blow of effort. Tonight, we want to thank you. I want to thank Dr. Hudson, who shall come. We'll introduce him in few moments as our moderator. But I want to say that many of us have heard this quote. Nelson Mandela said that "Education is the most powerful weapon which we can use to change the world." It is not just a byproduct. Many talk about the power of community, but we all know that education is indeed a mover and shaker of global society. So we are very happy to have you tonight. We will follow our program. When I asked Reverend Gregory Thomas at first, after the Alamo Street would come to share with us and order a prayer, then we will be introducing the moderator by Ms. Erica Carter, and then we shall begin from there on out. Again, thank you for coming tonight. We hope that the panel can answer some questions and people know more about them and ask people about Luke's word out tonight. Mary, let me also say that we have the fine men of our alder fraternity also back there. They are taking names, the members who need to register to vote. This is a review for a moment, so please understand that they are back there, ready to leave you and sign you up to vote.
Good evening.
Good evening.
May I have the pleasure of introducing our moderator for this evening? Dr. Henry Hudson, a native of Suffolk, Indiana. Dr. Henry Hudson is an established public speaker, attorney and assistant professor of political science at the state university. Following graduation from Indiana State University with a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice, she pursued her degrees of her from Washington University in St. Louis, Missouri. Upon her minutes to the state of Missouri and St. Louis, Florida, she further education by completing her master of arts degree in urban theaters from local state university. And she was also received a master of science in criminal justice from the University of Cincinnati. Dr. Henry Hudson is also a proud student of her doctoral degree from Calhoun University in nonprofit management and leadership. She is currently a commissioner for the city enforcement plan commission, and she serves as the diversity officer for the Southern Association of Pre-Male Pacers. And she's also a proud mother of two daughters and three grandchildren, and a member of the capital office of the royalty incorporated. And Dr. Henry Hudson tries to teach the generation of civil service, the legal system, and what it truly means to be a well-gotten citizen. Please help me welcome our moderator for this evening, Dr. Henry Hudson.
Good evening. Welcome again. Get ready to be informed and engaged as we prepare the election on November 4. The rules of engagement for this evening. I will introduce each candidate, who will have two minutes to give their bio in addition to their platform. After each candidate gives their bio and platform, I will give each of them a question. You have two minutes to answer the question. What I ask this evening is that we be role models for the children. That means two things: being respectful of one another, and it means being respectful of time. So when they tell you that it's two minutes, that means exactly what it means: two minutes. So let's get ready to be engaged. I will first introduce CJ Bond.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am CJ Bond. I'm running for the school board here in the city of Portsmouth. Would like to first start off with, but I'm not, I'm not a person of native. I am not an educator. You will hear a lot of people who will tell you tonight they are educators, that they're part of the education system. I am not. I grew up in Virginia Beach. I went to the Virginia Military Institute. I worked as an engineer in downtown Portsmouth at the firm of higher gear. My platform is based off of two parts. Part one is a number: forty-seven point three percent. Forty-seven point three percent is the percentage of schools in Portsmouth that are fully accredited. Now forty-seven point three percent, if you are a three-point shooter or two-day is very good. For a school's success rate as accreditation, it's not very good. We need to have all schools fully accredited, and part of that needs to be through leadership. We have heard members of the school board say their purpose is to govern. When you're elected as a member of the school board, you're not elected to govern. You're elected to lead, and we need leadership to be able to do that. And I have a question.
Thank you. Lynn Riley.
Good evening. Thank you to the MLK, the U.S. Comedian, those assembled for this opportunity. I'm Lynn Riley, a candidate who was seen on the boards of the school board. Now, for forty-plus years as a teacher and administrator, I have achieved this through those, and I also failed to meet some of those. But during my tenure, I had very challenging, some rewarding experiences, but I have come to several revelations, one of which I can express a story that I will tell you that I had used in a professional presentation session. Now, there were two fishermen in a boat rescued a child drowning in the river. As they rowed on, they saw three children, then four children, five children drowning, and they saw a whole river full of children drowning. Now, as the fishermen and the oars started to row back to the shore, the other fishermen asked them, "Where are you going? Can't you see all these children drowning? We need to rescue them." The fishermen at the oars replied, "I'm going to find out who's throwing these children in the river, and I'm going to stop them." Now, this story kind of illustrates the urgency that we are pressed, that we experience. We put students at risk for school failure. Many of those factors, we have no control over: poverty, a lot of rent engage, and the list goes on and on. But what I've learned over the years is that there are many school policies and practices that throw some children in the river to drown. Policies and practices that are well-intentioned, but may have disastrous consequences for children, especially those from a certain demographic. So what I want to do is start a discussion when I get on the school board with the new superintendent and with the school board members, that we need to evaluate some of our policies and our practices that place many students at risk of failure.
Hi. Thank you.
My name is Katrina Dadd, and I'm running for the school board because I have been hands-on within our schools. I've worked with many of your children or your grandchildren. A few years ago, I launched a state-owned, setshift college campaign in Norfolk, and I realized many of our children, they didn't have a goal set for them by, whether it was going to college or finding a job. Many of them was hopeless due to the lifestyle that they were living in. And I wanted them to know, and I put before them goals that they could reach, whether they were small goals or major goals. Some became mentors, some decided that I can't go to college and I do not have to become a product of our environment. I want to be at the table when the comments are made, when the decisions are made. So I think it was for the students, for the parents who feel like they're not important enough to come out and be heard. Those parents who have been overlooked and disrespected, basically. I want to be there. I want to be there for each. I want to be the one that they can go to and know I will ask the questions for you, and I will work with those that's there with me without prejudice or judgment. I'm here to serve you. I'm not here for the title. I'm here to make sure our children meet every goal and be successful in life. They can be, but we want them to be if we do the right thing about them.
Thank you. Joseph Fleming, who is currently incoming on the school board.
My name is Joseph A. Fleming. I am a product of Portsmouth Public School. My passion is for education within Portsmouth Public School, and my passion is for the students. It is my continued desire to focus on parental, community, and business involvement. I continue desire to focus on instilling high expectations in all of our students, as well as making sure that our schools continue to grow with quality teachers and competitive salaries for teachers. I am excited and looking forward to serving on the school board, making sure that I represent the community, and that each of you can depend on me, being an advocate for you and being accessible to you. You can share with me your views and your concerns and observations for Portsmouth Public Schools, and I will continue to carry it forward, as well as work along the city council to make sure that our budgeting process continues to be transparent.
Thank you. Laura McIntyre.
My name is Laura McIntyre. I apologize that I just walked in here. I was just at Churchill High School for open house, where my daughter is in the ninth grade, and I hadn't been there first. So now I'm here, and I just want to tell you that I'd like to begin tonight by saying that I like Martin Luther King. I think it's appropriate to say, I dream of a world where my children are not judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. My children already do not judge me by the color of their skin. And I would also vote for a nation where people do not vote by the color of someone's skin, but by the content of their character. I am going to represent every child in this system, in Portsmouth Public Schools. I don't care what color they are, they can be green. They're going to get even more out of my attention, because I desire to see all of them succeed. And also, I want to work just as hard for the parents, for the teachers, for the staff, for the bus drivers, and for the taxpayers, because I do not believe that I'm giving my hand to the system is the answer to fix our problems. I as well would like to hear your views and your opinions, and your problems and your needs in your particular schools and situations, of what you need done, and I'm going to work very hard to accomplish those things for you.
Claude Farris, currently incumbent on the board.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Claude Farris. I've spent thirty-nine years in Portsmouth Public Schools as a teacher, as a principal, and many years in central office. And I'm currently Minister of Administration and Senior Adults, and First Amendment Director of the Board. I'm currently in the running for reelection. There's a saying that no one rises to low expectations, that the tide raises all of the ships in a harbor. So we have to have high expectations for our students, and I believe that if we do three things: one is that we hire and retain competent teachers, especially in math and math. I want to tell you that Portsmouth Public Schools and Hampton Schools are the only two school divisions in this area that did not give teachers raises. We have a resolution for city council, and I pray they will pass that resolution so we can give our employees a salary increase. Number two, all schools should be fully funded. I agree with that. Not every school board member would say that tonight. However, the mark is four hundred. If you make four hundred, you pass the test. I want to make sure that we have five and six hundred clubs. That means that our students are achieving higher than low expectations. We need to hire a superintendent that has twenty-first century goals, and I want to ask that superintendent, what are your goals for the next five to ten years? What are you looking at? And one, and the last one, is a working relationship with city council. So I want, at the end of this month, well, actually, end of October, we're going to be having a joint meeting with city council, and I want us to be able to sit down, and they talk about their issues, and we talk about our issues, and resolve those things, because Portsmouth cannot continue to have this kind of in-house party. And I believe that if we do these things, that Portsmouth will be number one, and that all of our kids will learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelio Fattillo Jr.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here and also come in close to the city looking for having Eric serve the city of Portsmouth. I am Cornelio Fattillo Jr. I'm a Portsmouth native. I currently have the broad, active service that you asked me there full-time. I earned a double master's degrees and also bachelor's degree. But more than that, my platform is based on three points. One, physical accountability. We need to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do with our tax office. If we spend the money correctly, that will lessen the burden on the backs of our teachers, who will come out there and promise to pay for their own resources, that money is being wisely. We also need to have proper compensation for qualified teachers and staff. I'm not going to say you're hyping it. Portsmouth doesn't have the tax base to pay teachers what they really and truly deserve. No city in America can pay teachers what they truly deserve. But we can come up with proper packages, working with our community partners and students, to give our teachers and children the appreciation that we do have. And if we can improve our school system, we can bring more families to the city of Portsmouth, which will expand our tax base, and may have a chance of getting proper raises to our teachers. Last but not least, is strengthening community partnerships. I want to see citywide mentoring programs, tutorial programs. Our children deserve all the help they can get, and if we come together as a community, we can do just that for our children, for they're not our future, but they are our today.
Thank you. Linda D. Ryder, currently incumbent on the school board.
If it's education, I'm going to stand up for it. I can speak better to you, standing up for education. I really appreciate the privilege of being here tonight and talking to such a good-looking crowd of people. I think my fire answers who I am, what I'm about. Honesty is a part of my identity, just like passion is a part of my identity: passion for excellent education, just like my commitment to be a cheerleader for the successes of our school system. I'm always so amazed how quickly anybody can find criticism when they haven't even done their research and had the facts to present. And this is something that has bothered me on the campaign trail. I want you to be really leery of the word transparency. There are people that will say, "Oh, yeah, we want transparency between us and you." I think that's a word they use to exude loyalty from you. Be cautious. My other concern is, I want you to have the facts. I don't want somebody to say, "We're going to not be hiding stuff from you." So that's why you see, attached to my handout, those of you who are so concerned about finding a skilled program, career in tech, take a look at those fifteen or twenty that we've got in all three high schools. And this past year, we earned, kids earned seventy industrial certificates, going right out into the world to work if they want to. Thank you.
Sorry.
She was going to give you thirteen.
Ingrid Whittaker.
Good evening, everyone assembled. I'm Ingrid Whittaker, and I'm originally a native of Trinidad and Tobago, West Indies. I grew up in Chicago, Illinois, and I am a product of the public school systems in Chicago. I also hold a master's in social work, as well as sociology, and a doctorate in sociology and social work. I'm married to Dr. Mark M. Whittaker, who's with us this evening. We have four children, all of whom have gone, went through the Portsmouth Public School System. Our oldest child is a graduate of IC Norfolk High School, and is now at North Carolina A&amp;T University. And our remaining three children are in the Portsmouth Public School System. My platform is as follows: I believe education, or public education that is, is a social right. And with that being said, we have to have revenue shared between the city and the school system. We cannot roll education back fifty years. We need to fund education properly. Secondly, minority contracting is an issue that was brought up with the school board in the last few years, and that needs to continue to be an issue. We cannot continue to have a small percentage of minority businesses receive contracts from a publicly funded entity. Thirdly, we need to expand the number of technical programs that are available to our children. As a college professor, I know that not every seventeen or eighteen-year-old is ready yet to enter a college environment, and giving them the opportunity to do something in a technical or trade school is something that we need, and many people have experienced what are called gap years to ensure that.
Thank you. The next two individuals are candidates for special election to build the undespired term of Dr. Elizabeth Daniels. Laurel J. Armstrong, who is currently incumbent.
Good evening. I would like to first thank MLK and us, the opportunity to share our ideas about education. First of all, my name is Laurel J. Armstrong. I am a product of Portsmouth Public Schools. All I know is education. At the age of two, my mother was director of a nursery at St. John Baptist Church, so I've been in education all my life. After thirty-five years, in 2012, I retired from the Portsmouth School System. I have many students that I have taught, who are right now, they are pillars in the city of Portsmouth. They have made milestones in their achievements. However, my platform is, children are my business, because indeed they are. That is what I stand for, that is what I've always done. I've made sure that the children that went through my class, they learned, they knew, and they succeeded in what they wanted to do. Some of my goals, recruiting and retaining our qualified teachers. After last year, some of my teachers that I mentored as a teacher, they led the school system, so I had an opportunity to ask them what happened. And one reason, a lot of them live in Norfolk and Virginia Beach, and because we're not able to give raises, that was a deal within itself. But they know that I stand up for them. I had the opportunity to go through the schools before pre-service weekend, speak with the teachers and administrators, to let them know, although we could not give you a raise, we appreciate all that you do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Duncan Hines.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. I want to say thank you to the MLK and to the other candidates that are on the stage. We know what it's been like the past six weeks and for the next five. So my name is Sarah Duncan Hines. Yes, like the cake mix, Duncan Hines. I am a product of Portsmouth Public Schools. I graduated in 1996. Bachelor's in history and a master's in education and curriculum and instruction, and I started teaching at Waters Middle in 2002, and was pulled to a central office position as an instructional specialist in 2004, and where I worked until 2012, and then took a coordinator's position in neighboring district. My goal for Portsmouth is to change it. I think that we're to a point where we need to see new ideas, we need fresh ideas. We need, we need a school board that will rebrand Portsmouth Public Schools. We sell the city, and in order to get people here, families here, we need a new vision and a new goal and a new look for Portsmouth Public Schools. What I have done in my career has been problem-based learning, has been skillset learning, has been looking at the whole child and not just a test score. To get a four hundred on a test, that means you have earned a sixty-two percent on the test. The last time I checked, that is not a passing grade in anybody's class. What I want to do is I want to bring energy, I want to bring ideas, and I want to bring a change to Portsmouth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your bios and platforms. However, before we begin, I'd like to give you a rule again. You are role models. That means be respectful of time and be respectful of one another. Your answers should not be directed towards an individual. There is not about you, it's about the children. Start with again. What do you see your role and responsibility as a member of the Portsmouth School Board? I will start with the incumbent, Claude C. Paret Jr.
As a school board member, when I, when I read, I was one voice and I'm one vote. And it is our, it is our responsibility as school board members to set policy and procedure. It is not our responsibility to run, quote, the school system. That's why we hire a superintendent, that's why we hire an administrative staff. So the role that I see as a, as a school board member is to support the administration, to raise questions about issues that confront our school system, it is to keep it forefront, because I have been for thirty-nine years an instructional leader, ask those tough questions about instruction. We've got to make sure that all of our schools are fully funded. We have three middle schools that are not fully funded. We have two high schools that are not fully accredited, and we have half of our elementary schools. That is not, that is not good. And as a school board member, I've got to make sure that I'm working with our other school board members, because you have to look at being a team, you're on a team, and it's team-centered leadership. And when you work as a team, you can accomplish, you know, that T-E-A-M, together, together everyone achieves more. Well, together as a board, if we're not together on issues and working together on issues, we cannot accomplish those ideals for our children. So the reason I ran, and the reason I feel like I'd like to be re-elected, is I'm running just for those, just for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelio Fattillo Jr.
I believe my role would be what it is every day of my life, and that is first and foremost to serve. Being elected is not a glorified position. You're being elected to serve the people who put you in office. At first, my first role responsible would be to serve first for the parents, for the parents that voice their concerns on behalf of their children. Secondly, for the children who oftentimes don't have an opportunity to voice their opinions and how they feel. And thirdly, to build forth humility and reconciliation between the school board and the city council. We cannot move Portsmouth forward unless we work together. I would say that again. Portsmouth will not move forward unless we choose to work together. I also believe my role would be to make sure that policies are adhered to, and to make sure we oversee and supervise the administration of schools. I believe that our teachers need to be spoken for and need to be cared for, because they are breaking their backs. Teachers in Chesapeake and Virginia Beach can outspend Portsmouth teachers any day of the week, but they can't outlove our teachers. And I believe it's our responsibility to make sure they have the resources they need while I'm serving on school board.
Thank you. Linda D. Ryan.
As a school board member, I want to be able to continue to support twenty-first century programs for all students, an advocate for bringing in highly qualified teachers that are going to be able to administer this innovative construction- are going to be able to administer this innovative construction point I want to make. Portsmouth School System is the only school system that has garnered in the past four years international robotics contest, the only system. Last spring, out in California, there were five hundred teams from sixteen different countries. We placed forty-first. That's the kind of education that we need to be doing. It's expensive, education's expensive, but it's worth it. Our Starbase program for every fourth grader, fifth grader, and sixth grader. You can be a kid that's been suspended, gifted in talented English second language, but every fourth grader, fifth grader, and sixth grader goes through our STEM program. It has been applauded by massive scientists and others, because it's the only elementary school Starbase STEM program in the state of Virginia. This is the thing that I want to support, to move us here, because our kids, our students, they rise to the occasion. That's the change, and that's what I want to support, to continue, to bring our kids to be able to compete globally and be successful at it.
Thank you. Ingrid Whitaker.
I see my role as a member of the school board as one who is able to bring in leadership that is competent enough to understand the challenges associated with an urban school system. And some of those challenges include the fact that right now we have a graduation rate for our male students, particularly African-American male students, that is relatively low compared to other districts. In addition, we also need to understand that in the city of Portsmouth, if you look at the poverty rates in the city and the number of students who are on reduced or free lunches, that's an issue that also needs to be understood by whoever is in leadership. And so, as a member of the school board, I think it's important to select persons, not only in terms of the superintendent, but persons who hold leadership positions and make decisions about our school system, who have the experience, who are competent, and are willing to advocate for the things that we need in this city, including the funding of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel Armstrong.
Yes. Again, good evening. As a school board member, my role, I feel to be first a public servant, because that's who we serve. We serve you, we serve the citizens, we serve the children, the parents, that we are to go out and we're to achieve and we're to help you get what we need to be. I'm an advocate for children, for the teachers, for the staff, and for our schools. Recently retired from the school system. As of last year, I was in the schools. I know what our children need. I know what our teachers are needing every day. I know what we need to bring our parents into the schools, so that we can help those learn what to do to help their children at home. Also, to be visible in schools, to assist those teachers where they need help. When you have a classroom thirty-some children, you can't serve them all at one time. We need to be an advocate where we can go out in our schools and we can help the teachers as well as the parents. Also, to bring together our council with the school board, so that they can see that we're all serving one purpose. We're serving the citizens. It's all for the children. What we do for the children, education is the key.
Thank you. Sarah Duncan Hines.
The role and responsibility of the school board member is, number one, you are a servant, and I am elected, and I must hear the voice, and I must respond to the voices that have put me here. Number two, it is to support the superintendent and their initiatives. It is to help that superintendent staff school, provide instruction, make sure that the school division is going the way that they wanted to go. It is to trust but verify. Trust our numbers, trust the city council's numbers, but I'm not going to take it face value. I will verify. It is my role as a school board member to have a working relationship with the city council, to make sure that we get the funding that we need and not going back to the coffers, per se, to ask for more money. We need to be diligent with our funding. We need to make sure that we do our role to make sure that our schools are fully funded and to ensure that instruction will reach every time. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ Rydner.
As a member of the school board, my role is, as everyone said, you're a servant, first sort of officer, servant people who have elected us. But our role also is to be a leader. You must provide leadership, provide guidance to superintendent, support the superintendent in their policies, but you also need to hold the superintendent accountable, physically accountable, and accountable for the accreditation of all our schools. As I said at the beginning in my opening remarks, forty-seven point three percent, that's not a big number, that's one of the lowest numbers in the state. We need a hundred percent, a hundred percent accreditation. Another role that I think we need to have is, instead of continuing to look to city council for money, we need to look for alternative sources of a way to get funding. Mount Mary High School's school system, every student has an iPad, every teacher has an iMac computer. They did this by applying for a grant from Apple. Right now, our school system does not have a grant right, so we're not out looking for those ways to be able to get additional funding. We need to look at those options, figure out what we need to do, hold the superintendent accountable, but also support the superintendent in what they need to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Brannan.
My role as a school board member is to be a public servant, as the officer said, but it's the role of the school board is to set policy, is to be accountable for the funds appropriated from the city council, prioritize those spending according to structural needs based on superintendent's goals. We also have to adhere to the code of conduct and ethics regarding the assessiveness of assessments. We should be visionaries, and we should be courageous. We should evaluate the policies and practices in return to make sure those that are doing well are replicated, and those that are not, policies are deleted. My role as a school board member is to monitor superintendent and staff, to make sure all of our instruction programs keep the standards that we have set. The school board has a vision, sets a vision, and a vision for all students under its charge.
Thank you.
As a member of the school board, my first priority is to promote education. And it doesn't always start with our board members. It starts in our community. We have to let the community know that education is important, that our future is important, and we are willing to bridge the gap between council, between staff, between our teachers, and between our parents, to make sure our schools rise to the occasion. Because if we don't reach out to our children to let them know as educators and as leaders within the community, that we are there for them and we want them to participate in all of the programs that we have, that we're not doing our job as educators and as a leader. So, on the board, I think the first thing we have to do is get in and be hands-on to find out exactly what the needs are of our students, what the needs are of our teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everyone that play a role in our community, that will assist our children to graduation, that will keep them out of the streets, that will keep them from being afraid, and focus on education once again. That's my role. My role is to be there for you, to be there for our schools, to be there for the administration and everyone that has a need within our city, because without education, we will die.
Thank you. Joseph Lune.
We have to remember that education is the focus, and remember that education is the focus, no matter what we do and what decisions we make, we have to always focus on education, focus on students, and to ensure not only that we're focusing on education and students, but that we're listening, that we're hearing the concerns of the community, and we are partnering with one another, but we're also holding one another accountable and being held accountable, knowing that the community will hold us accountable and that we answer to you. Also, partnering with the city council, as we hold every decision maker accountable and make decisions as relates to education and as relates to students. We have to make sure that education and students continue to be our key role and responsibility as a school board member.
Thank you. Laurel Armstrong.
It's my role as a member of the school board, to be representative, next to some of our schools. It's also to be a team member. With nine people on this board, we have to be able to work together, bring about those changes that need to be made. One of those things is to be very diligent in appropriating the funding and the budget, so that no money is wasted, but the best thing is done with your tax dollars. Also, it's very imperative that we step things up a little bit. We don't need any house schools that aren't accredited, or so many children that aren't passing SOAs or aren't graduating. And I know that people will rise to the level of expectation that you set for them, and as a member of the school board, I believe that it's our position in leadership and in servant hood that we would set those goals a little higher. Also, that we see that our teachers and our staff, as we often say, it's for the job that they do, that teacher I was just with has to bring out everything and homework and color printer, because they're not going to be using her classroom, and that's coming out of her pocket. And I just found that out ten minutes ago from my own child's teacher, that's not right. They don't get paid enough, that they should have to be spending their own money. And that the parents have to buy all this school supplies this long, when there's a budget as huge as we have to pay for those things. So, we have to be able to work together and work with city council, that we have the funding that we need to pay for the things, that we can have students in this city that are headed up in a global market, that not only have a cell phone, but know that there's an opportunity, that they might be the person making the cell phone or programming the cell phone, that we are capable of getting rid of the negative stigma in the city, that Portsmouth has for poor quality schools, so that people can be more willing to move here, bring their businesses and their families here.
Thank you. The next question will begin with CJ Rydner and continue to end with Sarah Hines. What do you feel is the correlation between the school system and the economy in the city of Portsmouth? Again.
The correlation between the economy and the school system is almost directly proportional, in that when the economy goes down, taxes go down. Also, you get less people being able to donate, because they do not have the disposable income to be able to assess. In order to be able to offset that, excuse me, we need to look at alternative ways for funding. We need to be able to look towards businesses who need a tax deduction, or look to businesses to donate materials and equipment to the schools, in order that our schools have the latest technology. It's sad, when I talked to a teacher the other day, and they told me they would take my computer from 2008, because that would give them an extra computer in the classroom. That computer hasn't been used probably in four years, and it's nowhere near the latest or greatest technology. Doesn't even happen in a car to be able to connect to the internet. But they said they would take it, because they could run programs on it that would help their students be able to learn math. We need to be able to do everything we can to make sure, we look at every alternative ways to get money, in addition to talking to council about additional funds, but we do need to look at alternative methods, because when the economy turns down, I saw in the business that I worked in, I'm an engineer, when the economy went down, projects disappeared. Nobody wanted to develop anything. But we can't have that happen to our schools. We need to invest in our schools. As Robert Merrick said at the beginning, education is the best weapon we have for people's world, and we need to make sure every child in the city of Portsmouth is educated properly.
There is a direct relationship between the city's economy and the school system. Taxpayers express their desires by having several options. They move, because they perceive that school divisions are not meeting the standards that they desire. And so, when working class and middle-class people move out of the city, it possibly use a tax base. The city council only has so much funds to appropriate to schools. We get a lot of funds from the state of Virginia, the legislators, and that pocket of funds is driving up, and we know that. So, we're going to have to be perceived as a school system that meets the needs of the citizens of Portsmouth, where schools are fully accredited, and students graduating from high school either career or college degree. Students need jobs, and if we don't have a labor force for business industry in this community, that also reflects upon our tax base. So, we need to prepare students to work, those who do not go to college. We also need to assure our citizens that they can have a home, raise their families, pay taxes and enforcement, because these students will get a quality education. So, there is a direct relationship between the economy and the school system.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett.
Well, first of all, I was a military spouse, so I know exactly how a poor school system or a very successful school system would impact your city, because you can be in Tennessee or California, and when it's time for you to get orders to relocate, the first place you want to know is what type of school system do they have for my children? That's the heart of every military parent. And Portsmouth in the Tyrolean area is the largest-based facility in the United States. So, if Portsmouth doesn't get their school system to a degree where parents will say, "I would choose Portsmouth because it's organic, family-oriented," then we're going to be in trouble, because before we can even see the dollar, the dollar's going to be playing to go somewhere else.
Thank you. Ms. Lune.
Family and businesses make decisions based upon the school division. And within Portsmouth City School Division, in order to continue to keep families within our community and to keep businesses within our community, our school division has to be strong. Our schools have to be strong. We have to have reliable backgrounds as relates to the schools that we attended when we go to college, as well as when we're looking for a career. So, schools are the foundation for family and the foundation for business and economic development. That is the only way that economic development can be stronger than our city, is through our school division.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Yes, suddenly there's a direct correlation between economy and our schools. It is very crucial what kind of school system we have in our city, because we have a beautiful city, and you know, all kinds of opportunities here and all kinds of beautiful things to see, but people just don't want to live here because of the schools. And I'm not just saying that with a bad attitude, I'm saying that because on my campaign trail, I've been talking to just random people, and in less than twenty-four hours, four people told me they moved out of Portsmouth because of the schools. I didn't ask them that direct question, I asked them if they lived in Portsmouth. And they said, "No, I moved because of the schools." Four people.
Four people in less than 24 hours. That's a lot. And we need people to move here. We need our economy to grow because we have people that live here, that pay taxes and have businesses. And we're not getting that. People don't want to come here because the schools are poor. I moved here 30 years ago because I was an apprentice in a neighborhood. And the first thing I did before I found a place to live was go around and visit some schools so I could find a just school to put my children in. I'm not the only parent that does that. So families are going to look around in the Tyne Water area and they're going to select a city based upon the school system. So we have to have a school system that's going to draw people here, that's producing students, and we need students to come out of there that can work in our shillars and in our businesses that are enforcement. Because I teach the prentices at TCC, I teach the math class. And I had one student come in and there were three feet in New York, that he's starting to work in our New York. We need to put out better high school students than that and we need to step it up a little bit so that when they graduate, if they want to go to college fine. If they don't, they'll be available to work in different trades and good type places in our city.
Thank you. Ms. O'Gorman?
This problem did not happen just recently. 25 years ago, under a different board and a different superintendent, we presented to the city council research correlation between why is it important for us to have a strong viable school system with a quality education and how that can attract businesses to come to Portsmouth? That hasn't changed. When I was director of communication, one of the things that I had to do was to prepare a packet of information and take it to the military. And we held breakfasts and luncheons for our relatives so that we could educate the relatives of their city because what they were doing is they were redirecting many of the military families away from Portsmouth because of the school system. And we wanted to bring them, we brought them into the schools to show them that we do have great schools and our schools are not falling down. And so that correlation is extremely important because of the economics, because it's very important for us to maintain a high quality school. Because honestly, when people move into the area, you're exactly right. They want to make sure that they have, that their children are going to a safe school, that they're going to receive a high quality education. And therefore, we're going to be able to have a, all of our schools fully accredited and then you're going to be able to have businesses to say, "Look, let's take another look in Portsmouth." You know, there's a song, Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people, a good place to live and work and play. Well, that's where we want to be now. We want to make sure that we're, we've got the best school system and when you do that, you're going to attract businesses and they're going to take another look in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacillo Jr.?
I believe I said in my statement that it's common knowledge that if we improve our schools, families move to Portsmouth and the tax base will increase. I want to go a little deeper than that. I think we should work together to prepare and create a city that when our students graduate from college, that they want to have a place they can actually come back home to work instead of moving away. I believe we should restart the Portsmouth dream to all of our children. They don't have to go to New York or Chicago to launch the next big idea or next big business. They can come back home, they can do it right here. For example, daddy Matthew James's daughter Lauren, she came back home to Portsmouth to practice medicine. Stephanie Morales, she graduated, came back to Portsmouth College for turn offs to practice law. But at the same time, we must ask ourselves the question, why did I have three students graduate from college and then move to Richmond and Chesapeake to become educators? What do we have to do as a community, as a school board and city council to create an environment to make sure that our children will come back home and feel they can come back home to start a great life here in Portsmouth? I have a great communication system that I want to put in place that will foster a good, a good relationship with our current teachers as well as our so many graduates that we stay in contact with while they're in college. So when they graduate, we may offer them to come back home to Portsmouth to work and start their lives. That's what we have to recreate at Portsmouth.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder?
Where are you, my good associate, Mary Spie? I think when we look at our city and we look at the school system, someone mentioned the word perception and that's our problem. Sometimes we are our own worst enemies. We do have good stuff happening in Portsmouth and in the school system, but people have a better time criticizing. Perception is what we have to erase. I talked to a real estate agent not too long ago. There are 180 houses for sale on the market in Portsmouth below the assessment value. There are people in small businesses who are leaving Portsmouth because they don't feel the incentive to stay. City council and school board, we're going to have to make sacrifices in order to get this excellent school division that we want, both of us. Because that is the biggest priority and the most important priority to keep our city and to keep our school system growing. I talked to someone in Magenta Beach when I was writing about our first college program. The seventh semester of senior year, kids get a college credit out of TCC. We have, this year, 1,000 students will have been in the program. At Magenta Beach, they don't do that. They could, but they don't. Chesapeake, they don't do that either. They all have the opportunity. But Portsmouth Schools is sending their students there. My campaign assistant got his 30 friends and instead of being a freshman going to college, he's a sophomore.
Thank you. Ms. Wicker?
Thank you. As so many have stated, a strong school system is a floor of economic development. And I think so many times when we talk about economic development, we're looking at attracting businesses or building stores, et cetera. But one of the things that's often left out is the funding of our school system so that we can ensure that in the future, we have a workforce that lives here, that's employed and able to pay taxes and contribute to the tax base. And as some have said, it's important that we educate our young people, not only in terms of what they learned at school, but also the importance of community. You know, if you think about why is it that people come back to Portsmouth, you know, to start businesses here, et cetera. It has a lot to do with the ties that they make within the community. And as I look at our school system, one of the things that I do note that is a strength is that our school system does have strong ties to the local communities and that's something that we can build on. But I'd also like to end by saying that when you talk about businesses and the tax base in Portsmouth, one of the things that we really have to work on as well is the minority contract rate. And that is a percentage of businesses that are owned by minorities who receive contracts that are funded by taxpayers. And that's money that could be spent and used in Portsmouth by members of the city. And so that's a definite issue that we need to continue to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Economic development is based on the success of our schools, the success of our children as they graduate from school. If they leave this area, they go away to school. When they come back, if they had success here, they're going to tell their friends, they're going to tell others that we need to go to Portsmouth. That's where I grew up. That's where I became who I am. We need to make sure that our schools are successful so that we can bring other businesses into, back into Portsmouth, small businesses, even the military. A lot of the military, they, their children at one time, they're coming to Portsmouth, but instead of coming to Portsmouth, they'll live in Norfolk, because of the town. So we have to make sure that we have that strong base in our school so that our parents and citizens will know that our children will have success in our schools. And that's what, that's the only way that we can bring about that economic development and raise the money and the tax base back into our school and to our city.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
I think I said when we started that I wanted to bring a new perception and a new idea and a new brand to Portsmouth. And by doing that, that will strengthen the economic basis here. We have to change the perception of Portsmouth. But if the businesses aren't coming to us, why don't we build businesses from within our schools? We have students that not, not just get jobs, but they cannot get professions in our city. Our biggest employer in the city is the federal government. We have students that cannot pass the apprentice test to be hired in that profession, not just a job, but a profession, a 30 and 40 year profession. Where do we teach the connection in our high school students and even our middle school students, the connection to community? Where do we give them business opportunities to go out and see what businesses we have in the city? Let's take a student that's taking a marketing class and put them with a small business. Let them learn from the ground up what it means to run a small business. If we can't bring them in, then we need to grow them and we need to look for those opportunities to grow from within and then we can expect everybody else to come and say, "Oh, wow, look what you guys have done." So if we can't bring them, let's grow them. Let's talk about the lack of community involvement. Let's get our small businesses, let's get our faith base, let's get our large corporations involved in schools. Let them come and see what Altria really does look like in the real world. Because I never had a teacher to tell me what Altria did in the real world. And let's ask schools that are welcoming to community partners and to parents to bring those parents into a city where those parents feel welcomed and feel a part of the city. Thank you.
Lots of information. The next two questions come from the audience and we will begin with Ms. McIntyre. What policies would you implement to improve accreditation status of Portsmouth school system?
What policies would I implement to improve accreditation?
Yes.
I would take a hard look at the SOLs. I tutored a neighbor girl a few years ago and you can pull out previous years SOLs off the net. And I printed out one out of 25 questions on the test where the answers were incorrect. But our schools were accredited based on the pass rates of those tests. I don't know how many of the answers are wrong on the answer keys. Because when I tried to bring it to the news, they didn't write my story. Well, I teach math and so I could definitely tell if the answers were wrong on a third grade math test. At that point, I think we need to take a look at with the, are assessing our students because if you're a goldfish and if you're a monkey and the test is you can climb a tree, well, obviously the goldfish is out. But we all have different gifts and abilities and we can't just go across the board and expect everyone to do the same on each test. Each of us has our different strengths and weaknesses and we can't be basing the accreditation and how well somebody's doing is basically on a school's test.
Thank you. Ms. Kline?
We also have to be concerned about teachers who are teaching core subject math, making sure that teachers are teaching subjects that they are certified to teach and also making sure that teachers are teaching in areas that they are, they have strong background knowledge in. So therefore, I believe that if teachers who are teaching in those core subject matters are standing in the classroom and teaching according to the curriculum, that students would be strong and able to pass the SOLs and our schools would rapidly become accredited. We have to make sure, again, that our teachers are the ones in those core areas that have that background and they're actually teaching based off of where they went to school and what they earned in their degree as well. And we just have to be concerned and make sure that principals review and assess as well as those department leaders review and assess to make sure that those teachers are well out and equipped.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
I think one of the things that we need to do to make sure our schools and test scores go up like they should is we need to implement a policy that we have time at the school where the students wanted to stay back and be tutored, that it's available, that we open our doors up and say, "This is the place where we educate you, but if you're falling behind, this is the place where we will get volunteers inside here and give you the help to build you up in the strength you need to make sure you not fall behind and just get passed along." I think there's a policy that needs to be set to make sure our students are just not looked upon as numbers. Once that number is reached right now, the students can say, "I passed the SOL and I don't have to go back to school because I'm done." And that is a sad reality, but my twins are 16-year-old juniors in Wilson. They're honor roll students and they tell me that every year, "Mom, school is over because the SOLs are over and we passed." And the teachers say, "We don't have to go back to school." That is unacceptable. But again, we have to know the issues that are going on so we can address them and then set policies in place for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder?
One of the things I mentioned in my introduction was that we're going to have to revisit school board policies and practices. And SOL achievement, graduation rate, both type of school accreditation have been deficient because we promote students who can't read and we base the math. Our retention policy has gotten deeply used on. We have a policy that says, "We don't retain the students, we move them on." And then they get to high school, middle school, high school, they can't read, they can't do simple mathematics. So we're going to have to revisit the policy wherein students move on even if they haven't achieved minimum competency. That's why we're at the high school, they can't graduate on time, they can't pass SOL rates. All the research indicates that you have to be reading grade level by the fourth grade and you have a good chance of staying on track. But if you're not, you become very deficient in your academic skills. So that's one policy. Students have to be reading on grade level and have minimum competency math skills before they take any test.
Thank you. And my name is Ryder.
I'd like to start off with thanking the rest of my thunder. I have two nieces who were seventh graders in waters last year. Both of them will fail in math. And for me, that's unacceptable. I'm an engineer, math is a major part of my life. So I decided, let's figure out what's going on. And what I found out is neither one of them, as seventh graders, knew their basic mathematical charts, six times six, four times five. They didn't know it. And if you can't do that, you can't do the math. Everything builds on that fundamental. Your reading builds on that fundamental, your arithmetic builds on the fundamental. If you can't read, you can't study history, you can't study science because you've got to be able to read the textbooks and understand what's going on. I helped them both get where they passed math at a D level. Why? I bound pounded those mathematical tables into their head until they got the point. I keep mentioning 47.3%, the amount of schools that are red. I want to throw another number out at you. I want to throw another number out at you, sixty-eight point four percent. That was the accreditation over four years ago. Now, what you could hear is, part of that is the tests have changed and we need to adapt. My, my main question is, what we need to probably do is find out, what is Mr. Johnson at Wilson doing? What is Mr. Felton at Howard's Mander doing? Because their school scores have improved every single year. It's not rocket specific, it is defined by Robert Einstein as continuing to do the same thing and getting a different result. I went to the school board summer retreat, and what did I hear from the principals? I didn't hear anything that was changing in the way of how they're going to approach getting their S O L scores up. We have to change the system to get it to work.
One of the policies I have to look at would be our fiscal policy. In fiscal year twelve, Portsmouth Public Schools only spent sixty-three percent of its budget on instruction. In fiscal year thirteen, in the initial budget layout, it was laid out that they wanted to spend seventy-three percent on instruction. And for the state superintendent report corps, they spent sixty-four point four percent. I want to look at spending our money and putting money in the, in the classrooms where our teachers can use it the most. When I was a classroom teacher at Waters, I got a, I got a school budget of a hundred and fifty dollars to stock my classroom. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but that hundred and fifty dollars is not money that had to come out of my pay, that had to come out of my paycheck or my husband's paycheck. That was money that I could put into place, new and improved ways of doing things in this Duncan's classroom. It was ways that I could support my students who came to school with no materials. So one of the things I would look at is true fiscal responsibility for the money that we are given. One of the other things I would look at would be recruitment practices. We do have an aging teaching staff. Most of our teachers have been teaching twenty-five years or more. We have very few that are, have been teaching with Portsmouth for five years or less. We need to look at our recruitment, not only our retention, but where are we recruiting? How are we recruiting and how are we giving the message down to our Portsmouth public schools? Because if we're not going to the top colleges and if we're not going to get where those teachers are when they're coming out, we're not going to get the best that our students deserve. And those are the two things I would start with as a school board member.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong.
Yes. First of all, we have this phrase that we have called no child left behind. Our children are constantly being left behind. That's because we are not getting the money and the funding that we need to go into our schools to get what we need for the classes with technology. We have to have these children hands-on, the demographics in the city as far as the students are concerned. All children do not learn the same way. You have thirty children in a class, and you might have twenty of them that need that constant one-on-one attention, and they're not getting that. As I said, that no child left behind is really hindering the progress right here in the city. What we have to do is, we have to make sure that we look at the demographics in the city. We have to make sure that we look at the different schools. You have children coming out of some schools, we have to start at that bottom level, and we have to work them, work up. We start at the elementary level and work with those children. Then when they get to middle school, they will be where they need to be. When they get to high school, then we won't have to worry about the graduation rate because they've gotten at the beginning.
Ms. Wiger.
I think one of the things that was mentioned is the no child left behind and the SOLs. And as a college professor, I can tell you that I have students that come from various school districts. And one of the things that we start, we started seeing in the classroom is that students are lacking what we call critical thinking skills. Because many of the students I receive have grown up under no child left behind. Where a lot of what is happening is that they're being taught to the test, and teachers have to keep this pace where they don't have a chance to really have individualized lessons for students or teach it at their pace. So I think one of the things that we have to consider as a school system where some other school systems have considered is whether we want to keep, um, you know, the SOLs and follow the no child left behind mandates. Do we want students that can think critically, write well, speak well, be prepared to go to college or to some other educational setting with a set of skills that really mean something? But beyond that, I still say that funding is a critical issue. As was mentioned before, Portsmouth is not competitive in terms of teachers' pay. And if we want to have teachers that are qualified, certified, educated in the fields of their teaching like math, we have to make their pay competitive with the pay in the rest of the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Riley.
Policies to improve accreditation. The State Department of Education sets the requirements for accreditation. They send down the skills and the knowledge that they say, you got to do this to get accredited. What we have in the school system is the local curriculum, curriculum, which we align with the SOLs. And then we find new knowledge and new skills come down in. And teachers have to look at the new skills and the new knowledge that are going to be tested. They're not teaching to test, they're teaching new skills and new knowledge that are now required from the State Department. A lot of remediation and tutoring does go on because of the way testing is done. I was very amazed to find that math testing now from third grade on up, oh, you'll have three answers to a question that are all right. Oh, you know, all right, they're all right, correct. And if a student misses one of those, then the whole answer is wrong. So it's a new way of testing. That's one of the problems that comes with all of this. Speaking of graduation rates, which starts being counted at the freshman year to the high school year. Churchill has a ninety-eight percent graduation rate. Wilson High School, eighty-three, I C Morecambe, seventy-eight. And four years ago, they were half. So improvement is being made there.
Thank you. Ms. Catalina.
I believe the main key to implementing policies is making sure first forms that they are fair to teachers. I believe too many policies are already implemented without teacher input and how can we make policies that are having one of those advantages? I believe, uh, to help improve the scores, I believe children have individual needs. My rescue plan, I could probably recommend we have individual care plans for each child. Because they have individual needs, the child can care plans and the practice can't be the same. So in those care packages, we will have new goals and expectations for each child. How can we engage stronger, how can we have stronger parental engagement in those care packages? Our teachers are doing the job. They are, I actually go to classrooms and mentor kids. And our teachers are doing what they're supposed to do. But how can we engage parents more to help the teachers out? I believe teachers now, they have so much stress and so much strain because they're teaching to a test, they're not free to teach and use their speech and their gifts. So I believe before we actually implement the policies regarding the Motown halls, that, that school board members are happy with teachers to give a little positive they feel worth better for their children than they're teaching every day. I believe that in order to give the, the test scores up, we have to be more aggressive with grant writing. If broadly, you have to grant fifty thousand dollars for tutorial services, what can the school system possibly do? When I was working at Clark, I had children come to school with no socks and no underwear on and twenty-degree weather. The last thing they were worried about was how many trains Jack had to catch to get there back to Orlando. How can we increase mentoring programs in the school systems to deal with these, those children also, they can concentrate and focus more on their test scores? Thank you.
And Ms. Perry.
If you go to our website, our page, you will find a section called school board policies. These policies are written by the State Board of Education, and they are handed down to local school divisions. We have a policy committee of the school board that reviews those policies. And then as a school board, we approve those policies to be implemented. Now, there are two areas that I focus on because I, because I'm in, my background's instructional. Is one is the, is instructional policies to make sure that our policies are aligned. Let me, let me say this to you. As a classroom teacher, as classroom teachers and as a school division, we have a written curriculum that is given to us by the State Board of Education. It is not Common Core. Now, you remember that Virginia had that opportunity to adopt the Common Core, the U.S. Common Core. Virginia said, our standards are already higher than the Common Core. You don't need an actual curriculum. So Virginia has a written curriculum. This most important area is the taught curriculum, which gives the teacher the creative opportunity to teach all those students. That's where the creativity is. We have got to have creative teachers that are well-paying because we're losing math teachers to other school divisions because other school divisions have given raises and they're leaving. Math teachers are critical. The third part of it is the test curriculum. The train starts in September, the train ends in May, and those students are taught, are tested at the end of May. And so you have the results printed out in the paper of how well Portsmouth achieved its SOL scores. The second thing is funding, fully funding. We have never fully funded education in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. The final question of the evening from the audience. You are elected to the City Enforcement School Board. What do you expect to have accomplished over the next four years? I'm starting with Hines.
Well, I can't speak for four years, but I can speak for two. So in the next two years, what I would like to accomplish would be to have a new superintendent with a new goal and a new vision to, to rebrand and to repackage Portsmouth Public Schools to be the best school system that we can have in the city. In two years, I would like to have better community relations between the school board and the parents. In two years, I would like to see more money funneled into a classroom directly to the teacher and not stopping at just the school level. In two years, what I would like to see are twenty-first century skills that are being taught in the classroom, starting with kindergarten. Those twenty-first century skills are things like digital literacy, collaboration, working together, problem solving, using critical skills, doing performance tasks that actually bring real life into the classroom, answering problems like you have been selected to review and to critique the weather lady on the local news station. After two weeks of your observations and her forecast, write a letter to her boss telling her what percentage of times she was right and what percentage of times she was wrong. That is a math, is a writing, and is a science standard that can be taught with real-life implications. That's what I want to see start happening in Portsmouth Public Schools, is to bring in the real life into the classroom and to bring in those twenty-first century skills into the classroom to make it more relevant and more meaningful for all of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong.
If you elected to the school board, what I want to see, all our schools credit. That's what we're fighting for. We can only achieve this if, as we said, we start at the bottom and work to the top. Just like climbing a ladder, you can't skip the ramps and then get to the top. So you have to make each one count. We want to have full accreditation, full funding, and we want to make sure that we keep and recruit the best teachers in the city. We have some of the best teachers here in this city, and we want to keep them. But if we are continuing not to pay them, we can't get that. I mentor Richmond, I lobby when we ask for full accreditation, when we ask for full funding. So that's what we have to make sure, that we have full funding so that we can recruit, so that we can keep those teachers that are here, that are working for the better, for the best, for our children. We have great teachers, we have great administrators, but we have to keep them. And we have faculty and staff that are working hard, but they're working hard for so little. So we have to make sure that we can give them what they need to have our children be successful. Not just in schools, but we have to teach them to think outside the box, not just bubble in that circle.
Ms. Wiger.
In the next four years, I definitely want to see our schools fully funded. We cannot continue to roll back what we give to our schools. That's not acceptable. Education is a social right. It determines so much in our lives, our health, our job skills, what we will have the opportunity to do later in life. I'd also like to see our teachers' pay increase so that it is competitive with the other school systems in our area. And thirdly, one of the issues that I haven't heard mentioned is the pay and the working conditions for our support staff. We have bus drivers, maintenance workers, various persons who work to help ensure that the environment of our schools is a positive one and children have an environment that they feel safe. And this is something that also needs to be addressed, and I will work hard to ensure that that is an issue. And lastly, as I mentioned before, we live in a city where people pay taxes for our school systems, and as such, we need to ensure that if you own a business and you are a minority member of this community, that you have a chance to receive contracts from our schools as such to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Riley.
Well, it's easy to agree with what everyone has said because that's what we all want to get on the school board to accomplish, accreditation. Um, and that's going to happen, I believe, for this year. Our, our parents becoming involved, we want that. But we've got to come up with the process, the procedures, how do we get them involved? That's a big problem for us to work with. Um, I really would like to see city council and the school board become sort of like friends, you know, being able to work together for the common good of our city. And I think that's one of the first steps we're going to move toward as we begin our joint meeting later this month. I'd like to see us to enhance the successful programs that are very meaningful and enjoyable for the students that are taking them and maybe build on them and come in with new ones that are more hands-on, critical thinking, problem solving. My dream, when I win a million dollars, I'm going to start a school where English, math, science, and history are taught through music, art, dancing, and drum. We'll have the best time, we'll learn, and we'll pass any test they throw to us because the kids will come to school.
Thank you. Ms. Catalina.
Again, I will say that they're hyper-aging. If elected, I would do my best to give the teachers the resources they need to make sure our schools reach accreditation. But I do get my word that I would do my best to establish citywide mentoring programs in the school system to increase school and community partnerships by at least fifty percent. To establish a communication system with our high school graduates so that when they graduate from college, we can try to invest them in back to Portsmouth. graduate from college, we can try to invest them in back to Portsmouth to use their different talents here. To try to coordinate a volunteer grant writing team, to try to establish and write grants for the city so we can achieve more for our community. And to have a career program, for me to establish internships while our kids are still in high school, and also while they're in college. They deserve to have a chance like Chesapeake schools, Evergady schools. It's just going to take a group of creative thinkers to make that happen. It's true that we need funds to do a lot for the school system, but we also need creative thinking. When I was growing up, my parents didn't have the most money in the world, but I knew how to play games with lightning bugs and jacks because I was a creative thinker. We need that same type of creative thinking on the school board, and I pray that I get your votes so I can do that.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Yes, as a servant here, I've had the privilege for the last four years to be on the school board. And I have seen some great things that we've done as a team. And what I would like to see in the next four years, I'd like to continue in the next four years, is that we live in a very digital age, and all of us and our students, I have a six-year-old grandson that will take my iPad and my iPhone and can do wonders with them. Our students are very visual learners, and I would like to see, and other school divisions have done this and are doing this, if we're taking small steps, what I want to see is to take larger steps. We're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on textbooks. Let me tell you, the process of textbooks, it takes five years to develop a textbook. Once it goes to the State Board of Education and it reaches the schools that is five years old, technology, the book's already outdated. School divisions are using iPads and Kindles, and they're loading their textbooks on these devices so that students have up-to-date information, not information that is five years old. The second thing is that I want to bring back the Portsmouth pride. That old song is, I tried to sing it a few minutes ago, Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people. We've got to have the Portsmouth pride back and develop that team leadership between the school board and the city council. And I want us to make sure that, of course, all of us, everybody's going to say this, all of our schools have got to be accredited. We cannot just aim for low expectations. We can't expect our students to go on to college if they're only hitting 400, they've got to hit the 500, 600. And I also want to make sure that we introduce, reintroduce cursive writing. Our kids don't have to worry.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
As my young school board, there's a thing I'd like to accomplish. One of those is to work towards greater purpose and value back to our education system. That, yeah, our students and our magnet students, they pretty much understand why they're there, they have a goal and a purpose. A lot of kids are in school, and they think they're there because seeing who has what shoes on, or parents are sitting there because they get free and reduced prices for lunch. So it's kind of like a babysitter all day. There's more to it than that, and the kids need to understand why they're in school, not just because the state says they have to go out and do anything. But they're there for a purpose so that they can be educated, so they can be comfortable with citizens, whether they continue on with secondary education, or whether it is to get a job in what area they're good at. I'm going to implement some kind of test, possibly in ninth or 10th grade, just like an aptitude and abilities test that's very expensive to administer. The kids can have an idea of what they might want to work towards, and then they can kick those classes. And I want to put some more computer classes so that people aren't moving to the beach so that that library can take the computer tracks that we don't offer. Also, I'd like to see us work towards more electronic textbooks. If one textbook costs $150, and you need four every semester, that's $600. That's enough to buy a iPad, and you download the books on it. And also, it's not as if you carry those four basic books, which my daughter fusses about. So I'm going to take a look at that. I'm going to take a look at the curriculum and the outlines as far as teaching kids to do everything in calculators that about the same with their own head. And I also want to work towards more PTA involvement, hiring teachers and implementing surveys so we can address, find out what the real issues are about bullying, and also the basic measures to correct that, and also a hard look at the budget so that your taxpayers aren't being wasted. Because money is a concern to all things, but it doesn't have to always come out of your pocket.
Thank you.
I will continue to be visible in the next four years within our schools and continue to work with empowerment opportunities. I have had the privilege in the past, as well as in the past couple of weeks, to work with empowerment sessions such as I see in our school wherein I was able to talk with seven, three of our freshman males, talk about the vision, not only our school division, but also the future, and talk about how that image is important. And we are going to also make sure that, as I work with our school board, that the image of Portsmouth remains positive throughout the school division. I want to make sure that not only am I a participant in parental involvement, but I want to encourage parents to be involved in schools as well as businesses. Make sure that every board that I serve on, every board that I'm connected to, or every business that I'm connected to, I ask, I inquire, I find out if there are ways in which they can place Portsmouth Public Schools in their budget and give towards our schools. I want to make sure that our teachers' salaries remain competitive, not only for first-year teachers, but throughout teachers' tenure, as well as all staff members feel valued and feel that they can be promoted throughout Portsmouth Public Schools staff.
Thank you. Ms. Denny.
After each of you go out and vote for Kaitlyn Deth, I will do my best to ensure that the morale of our schools, our classrooms, our staff improve. I want to see every student in the public school system with a public library card. Most of our students have never been inside the library, so they wouldn't know with that library card, they would receive a free tutor, as well as a direct line with a teacher for English, math, science, and social studies. That is free and is already provided. Those are the resources that we have already at Portsmouth that can increase test scores. I want to be a part of that. I want to make sure every school takes field trips to our library. They need to know what it's like to study in the environment in the library if we plan to see them go off to college. We have to make them familiar with that environment. I want to see the graduation rate go up. I also want to see the participants of our first college program double. We should have more first college graduates in our school system than we do pregnant students. And that is important, that is something we need to focus on, to make sure these students take advantage of the free resources that we have already in place. As your candidate, I will be your voice. I will always be hands-on with your children, so I may not make all of your elite events, but I will be there, teaching your children principle, morals, and self-respect. I want to see more hands-on mentoring programs for our young men. So we'll have more young men saying they're going to go off to college and that they're going to become professional adults, instead of saying, "Yes, I was going to a skate street program as I'm a member of that as well." We can do it if we make a change, and I plan on being there to take it for you.
Thank you. Ms. Reiter.
Yes, during the next four years, I would like to make sure that we have all of our teachers in every classroom. That's where all happens in the classroom. Teachers have to be competent in their subject matter, but they also understand that they have to build positive relationships for our students to continue to motivate them to stay in school. We need to assure that we have the facility to build positive public relations. Perception is now something. Perception has been learned negative by Portsmouth Public Schools. We haven't put enough positive images out about what our teachers are doing, what our principals do, what our school board is doing, all these wonderful programs that we have at Portsmouth. Other school divisions are emulating the programs that we started, but they're getting the credit for it. We need to build inter-agency partnerships. Now, the scenario earlier, we have students drowning because of poverty and neglect, low expectations, and all of the factors that impact their lives. Classroom teachers and building principals can't do it by themselves. We have to work with Social Service, Health Department, Mental Health to resolve some of the issues that our children have that keep them from succeeding. We're going to have to have pathways to success, to college, to possible graduation, need a pathway for the college presidents, need a pathway for those who are on the military, and we also need a pathway for those who go on from school to work. We're going to have physical accountability. We will continue to work with the council, and we'll continue to ensure that our citizens are competent enough to stay at Portsmouth and pay taxes.
Thank you. Ms. Reiter.
Ladies and gentlemen, the question was, what do we want, what I would see accomplished in this year if elected to the school board? What I would like to see accomplished is 100% accreditation. I'd like to see the technology in the schools be 2018 level, not 2010 level, not 2018 level, 2018 level. Ms. Perry made a good point. Central Christian Academy, which Mayor Wright visited on Constitution Day, every one of their students has a Kindle Bar that they use with all their textbooks. All their textbooks are on that Kindle Bar. My daughter graduated from there in sixth grade, they learned the Kindle Bar when she graduated. That's the type of innovation we need to be able to get from our students, our children. In addition, I'd like to see us fully funded, and part of that fully funded is not just asking council for money, it's for finding additional sources of funding, finding grants. There are grants out there, we just got to have someone to look for them. The next thing I'd like to see are teachers not be the lowest-paid teachers in the area. They're our best asset. They're the ones who are going to make our children be able to pass the test to come with revenue. And all of that will lead to two things. One, it will lead to an environment in schools where the parents feel welcome, because I've had lots of parents come up to me telling me, they go to the school and they don't feel like the administration wants to be there. We need an environment where the parents feel welcome. And what that will also do, it will make there not be a house for student enforcement because people are fighting to buy houses enforcement to attend Portsmouth Public Schools. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. We've heard some powerful words this evening. The words that come to mind are accountability, empowerment, innovation, creative thinking, public service, visionary, and bridging the gap. And with that, each candidate will be allowed two minutes to give their closing statement to you, the voters. We will begin with Ms. Reiter.
Thank you. I have been on the school board for 10 years, one and a half more since I filled a vacancy. I was vice chair for four years. I go to state and national staff development for school board members to hear about new legislation, to see hot topics that are happening in classrooms across the state. I want to stay up with all the knowledge that is happening in schools in Virginia and across the nation. I have been a member of the National Urban School Council and was on a task force for instruction for three years there. I think my education and experience and my uncanny dedication to education for our students equips me well to be an asset to the school board, and I look forward to you electing me again. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. Ms. Wicker.
I would like to leave you with this. When you think of Avery Wicker for school board, think about these three P's. First of all, I'm a parent of four children that are in or have been in the Portsmouth Public School System. I have a vested interest in ensuring that our school system is a strong one. Secondly, I've been a professional teacher for almost 20 years at Golden Indian University. I understand what is needed in terms of children having the skills to be successful in school, and that's something I'm very passionate about. And thirdly, I have a background in policy and research, and I think I understand what the essential needs are of our school system. And I can use those skill sets to ensure that we put in place competent leadership that understands the unique challenges of an urban school environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong.
As a recently retired teacher, I will always be a teacher. I am a parent, I am a grandparent, I am an advocate for children, for the parents, for the citizens, for the staff of each and every school. During the pre-service week, I allow myself time to go in and touch each teacher or speak to each teacher. During the, during that time, I was able to talk to some of the teachers. As I said, I was in the classes, I know what they need, I know what our students need. We need to be able to keep our teachers that we have. We need to prepare our students for the future by getting technology in the classes. We need to promote a positive image for our city so we can bring that revenue back to our city. We need to ensure that teachers' salaries are competitive to those in the neighboring districts. We need to make sure that students have what they need. They come to school to eat their breakfast, and they get what they need, not just from lunch and from breakfast, but they have what they need in the classrooms to achieve. We want to make sure that creating a positive image between our city council and our school board will create the best that Portsmouth can have as their students go on to the future.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
The mom of a three-and-a-half-year-old who is currently in class of 2029, that is why I'm sitting, half of the reason why I'm sitting on this board. I want to make sure that my child, and not just my child, but every child that comes through, walks away with skills and with knowledge that will put them on a purpose, that will put them into a life that they can sustain another family, that can stay here at Portsmouth. Give them the skills to go to college, give them the skills to get a profession, not just a job. My three Cs are college, career, and citizenship. I want to look at the 21st century, collaboration, innovation. Those are courageous words. It takes a leap of faith to be an innovator. It takes a leap of faith to change the way of thinking that we have done so for so long. The way that it has been in the past is not going to be good enough for the class of 2029. I would like to see pay increase, but pay is not the reason people leave. Not only do people leave their job because they feel that they are not making a difference or they are not thanked enough for their position. So let's look at having discussions between administrators and teachers that where we do say thank you to our teachers, and they're not just in the trenches every single day without support. I also want to connect with the community. Between 2012, no, sorry, between 2010 and 2013, we lost 112 students out of the Portsmouth Public Schools. Why is that? We need to look at our community and see, why are they leaving? Where are they going? We know that we have lost pre-K students to the tune of almost 150 students. Why are we losing our pre-K students? We all know that education is the bedrock of their success. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reiter.
Ladies and gentlemen, first I'd like to thank all of you for coming out today. Ladies and gentlemen, first I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. You took your time, and that's one thing, the one thing all of us that really have is we have time. And I appreciate your time and being here to listen to what we have to say. I started out tonight, telling you what I'm not, I'm going to tell you what I am now. I'm leader. Every organization I've ever belonged to, I've risen to a position of leadership. I'm driven, I'm dedicated. And what I did when I committed to run Portsmouth School Board was I made a commitment. When I make a commitment, I give 100% to that effort. And I ask that you all vote for me for school board because 47.3% is not good enough. If you think it's good enough, then you really like the same people. If you don't think it's good enough, then you go for challenging because something has to change. As I said earlier, the definition of insanity, as Al Bronstein said, is to continue to do the same thing over and over again and expect you a different result. I want to see different results for the city of Portsmouth. I want to see different results for our school system. I want to see 100% accreditation. So as my campaign slogan says, leadership for full accreditation. That means every school is cool. And I ask that you please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whitehead.
In my opening comments, I mentioned that I have been an administrator of a school that was fully accredited in for several years. I've also been an administrator of a school that is not fully accredited. So I know the indicators of school success, and I'm also aware of those where we lose our full accreditation status. We have to teach students to read and we have to teach them to do basic math computation before we promote them. We have got to find a new way to restrain from this no retention policy and make sure that students are on a grade level as they move from one grade to the next. It impacts graduation rate, it impacts SOL scores, and it is impacting our city from being a positive city where people can move, be proud, and be confident. Forty years is a long time dealing with the variety of students that I've dealt with. The most, fifty students, students that have been the most challenging. But a qualified teacher in the classroom is the key to success. But teachers can't teach SOL standards if students can't read. You can't teach algebra if you don't know how to multiply. So our first objective is to be sure that we stop throwing kids in the river and drowning because they don't have the basic necessary skills to read and to compute in order to move from grade level to grade level and to graduate on time. And I want to be that voice for those students.
Thank you. Ms. Decker.
I have 15 years of in-home daycare. I know that portions of having a strong foundation before you start school. I want to be the voice to make sure that we get our parent professionals back into our early classroom stages. We need to make sure that every student starting school is on the right track to finish school. We need to get our parents involved, and I believe with a school board that is diverse, with just as many diversities that our students face, is going to be the key to bridge the gap and to get the parental involvement that we seek. In order to do that, we need a board member that's hands-on already within the community, that can touch the issues that the community already faced. I, like Dr. Whitaker, have two students that have graduated from the Portsmouth Public School System, and I also have two juniors in Woodruff High School. So I have an impact and I feel every decision made by the board, and I know I will do my best to represent you very well. My voice will be heard and you will be seen so I can be an ear. I will be seen so I can be an ear for you as well as a voice for you because without being in your presence, I will not know your concerns. Thank you for your time and thank you for today.
Thank you. Ms. Decker.
For the past two years, I would like to thank you for allowing me to serve as well as electing me to serve on the school board. I am not known for long speeches, but I am known as an advocate. I am one who understands that the school board is not about me. The school board is about education and the school board is about students. And I look forward, I have listened to your decisions, whether I have agreed or not. I have taken consideration of your decisions, whether I have agreed or not, and I have understood your passion when it comes to the schools. And I will continue to stand for you, advocate for you, as well as be a link between the community and Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Two-minute warning. I have the ball. Ed. What I want to tell you is that I'm committed. I'm committed to work, whether I'm on school or not, I'm committed to continue to work towards improving the education in this city. I think it needs a lot of work. I've heard the saying, what if it's not broke, don't fix it? Well, things are broken, things are broken in our system in this city. Obviously, what we've been doing hasn't been working. I want to come onto the school board and make some positive changes. I want to make things happen, I want things to get better and improved because children are our future. When you get older, who's going to be taking care of you when you can't do what you're doing anymore? It's going to be this next generation that we're raising up in this city. These children are coming out of these schools, you have to think about that. So I want to make an effort on the school management, as a member, to work as a team. I bring education to it, knowledge, because I've been a parent and still am. I've been a teacher and still am. I've been a tutor, I've been on staff, I'm a mom, I have children in the school system. So I have a wealth of knowledge on all different aspects, what I need to do and take the time to research things before I vote on it. To understand what I'm talking about, not just come up with some random idea and actually take the time to research, does this work other places, is it going to work for us? How can we do things different? And again, I'm going to be committed to work for you, for your children, for your families, to do the best that I can with your money and to make sure that our funds are appropriated, that it's going into the classrooms, that we have STEM, that we can keep up with the rest of the world, with Northern Virginia that has higher pass rates than we do. I want to see our schools be accredited, I want our students to succeed, and I want it to improve our city as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Perry Jr.